Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the August 8, 2024 meeting of the Planning Commission to order, and if we could please have roll call.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Commissioner Cisco is absent. Commissioner Pardo?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson is absent. Commissioner Sanders?
Present.
Vice Chair Duggan is absent, and Chair Weeks?
Here.
I'll let the record reflect that all commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Cisco, Commissioner Peterson, and Vice Chair Duggan.
Thank you. I did want to mention that we have had a request to continue item 11.2 to August 22, and we will be discussing that under item 11. But for those in the audience who might be here for that item, I wanted to mention that. So with that, we'll go on to approval of minutes. They were the July 25, 2024 minutes. Any changes? Nope. Okay, so then those are approved as submitted. And do we have any public comment on item 2, approval of the minutes? Okay, seeing no one, we will now go to public comment on non-agenda items. You'll have three minutes if you'd like to go to the podium and state your name for the record. And Mr. DeWitt, you're first.
Hello, my name is Duane DeWitt. I'm from Roseland. I wanted to say hello to Mr. Pardo, and congratulations on your volunteering for this very important effort here. I've come here for a number of years to try to be more helpful in my community, and what brings me here today is the fact that yesterday, the city had a climate adaptation subcommittee meeting that wasn't able to be official because only one member of the committee, the mayor, showed up. And it was a very important meeting to discuss important activity on the part of the city and a consultant that they've hired to look into the general plan and how they'll be handling the climate adaptation type activities. So I have a basic request I want you to keep in mind for the rest of your lives: trees, please. It's very basic. If we're going to have any kind of climate adaptation that really works, we need to really delve into the fact that trees can be helpful, and urban forestry and urban greening is a vital part of how to handle things here in the city where urban heat islands will exist. So we need to have an aspect of this that's long term. We need to nurture the urban forests that we have. And with that in mind, we need to have a basic taking stock and doing a census of what's really important on this urban forest. I bring this up because if you leave from here today and go down to Fifth Street, you'll see that all the trees around the Fifth Street parking lot between D and E were cut down. So now you've got yourself a nice urban heat island, an asphalt parking lot, and a lot of folks thought, well, maybe that was a little extreme. You might have been able to save those trees. But apparently, the city doesn't have an arborist and doesn't really follow up on what it says it's about in the preamble for being a Tree City USA, which Santa Rosa proudly proclaims itself to be. I bring all these things up because trees also help with water conservation, and that's going to be something that's of an issue in the future also. I cannot stay for the entire meeting. I have to leave to go over to the Department, the Water Agency, and get their agenda for the Board of Public Utilities meetings. We really need to have young people, especially like Mr. Pardo, be at the forefront of this and lead us on how we're going to prepare for their future. One of my heroes is a nice lady named Greta Thunberg. She's out of Sweden. She pays attention, she speaks up, and she's doing some good things. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Is there anybody else who'd like to make comment under this public comment period? Okay, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public comment on non-agenda matters and bring it back to the commission. Our statement of purpose is that we are charged with carrying out the California Planning and Zoning laws in the city of Santa Rosa. Duties include implementing of plans, ordinances, and policies relating to land use matters, assisting in writing and implementing the general plan and area plans, holding public hearings, and acting on proposed changes to the zoning code, zoning map, general plan, tentative subdivision maps, and undertaking special planning studies as needed. And with that, we'll go on to commissioner reports. Are there any reports by commissioners? Okay, no reports by commissioners. And are there any public comments on item 5.2, commissioner reports? If you want to make a comment on that, please go to the top to one of the podiums, seeing no one rise, I'll go ahead and close that and bring it back to department report. Ms. Murray?
Hello, I'm Susie Murray. I am the supervising planner for current development, and I'm filling in for Jessica Jones, our deputy director today. I have one announcement other than that, and that is we have a few upcoming zoning code amendments, and staff will be reaching out to schedule some one and two-on-one meetings with all of the commissioners. So if you could all keep an eye on your emails so we can give you a little bit of background and prepare you for that meeting, that would be great.
Great, thank you. Are there any comments on, probably comments on the department report? If so, please go to the podium, seeing no one rise, I will go ahead and close that. And we have no statement of abstentions, no presentations, no consent items, no report items, and that will go on to item 11, scheduled item. And as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we received a request for continuance of item 11.2, so we will be reordering the item to take that request first. So if...
We are, yeah, we are requesting a continuance for a couple of reasons. We received some late correspondence yesterday that we'd like a little bit more time to research. We also are waiting for some additional information from the applicant. So both the applicant and appellant are here. They've both agreed to continue the meeting to a date certain of August 22, two weeks out, and if the commission would grant that, it would be much appreciated.
Great, thank you. So if someone could make a motion to continue item 11.2 to a date certain of August 22?
I move to make a motion to continue item, sorry.
11.2.
11.2 to a date certain August 22.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. So that was moved by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Pardo. If we could have a vote on that, please.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Pardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
And Chair Weeks?
Aye.
So that passes with four ayes, so that item will be heard on August 22. And now we will go ahead and go back to item 11.1, and this is a public hearing, conditional use permit to allow modifications to the previously approved Stone Bridge subdivision conditional use permit, PC-2022-035, at 2220 Fulton Road, file number CUP 24-005. And Mike Janusak will be doing our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Chair Weeks, and good afternoon, Planning Commission and members of the public. My name is Mike Janusak, and I'll be presenting the staff report for Stone Bridge subdivision CUP modification. So this...
Sorry, can I interrupt? I forgot to ask for ex parte on this, sorry. I missed my asterisk on my agenda. So this is an ex parte item. Are there any disclosures? Commissioner Sanders?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Carter?
I have nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Pardo?
I have nothing to disclose.
And I also have nothing to disclose now. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem, Chair. Thank you for clarifying that. And so the project has a previous approval. The original approval was in May 2021, and that was for tentative parcel map for 105 residential lots for single-family homes, and this included a conditional use permit for small residential as well as an MND. In December of '22, the applications were replaced with both a new tentative map and a new CUP, and this was to add three additional lots. And with that, the MND was also included in addendum to analyze the three additional lots. And since earlier this year in February, the applicant submitted a modification request to propose reduced setbacks for 21 out of the 108 lots, and so this item before this evening is just, only affects the CUP from 2022 for small lot subdivisions. I'll look at the existing conditions. There's a, my view isn't showing my notes, but there's an existing 14 and 1/2 acre vacant property. It's a single tax lot. And the neighborhood context, there's Montage 2 PD to the south, and then North Bridge, excuse me, one second. Okay, so I was just asking supervisor, supervising planner if I could get my notes on screen, but I don't think I'll be able to, so I'll just have to go off memory. So North Bridge, PD is to the north of the site, and Andre Lane would extend through all three subdivisions. And so the existing planning, existing land use and existing zoning, the existing general plan land use is low-density residential, and the existing zoning is PD. And so because the application before you does not affect the build-out of subdivision, the density stays the same, and so the tentative map is the same, and a lot of the consistency findings with the general plan are exactly the same. So the density is maintained at 3.77 units per acre. And same with the zoning compliance, all of the zoning standards and findings are unaffected from the previous approval except for the setbacks. So... But, and procedurally, zoning code section 2042-140-F4 allows flexibility where the applicant may request from the review authority, authority being the planning commission, that they can approve reduced setbacks that are smaller than the sublot, the small lot subdivision development standards. And again, the CUP findings are unaffected and maintained. They are continued from the original, and that's in the resolution before this evening, as are, and then again, a procedural note, so modifications to approved projects, that's found in zoning code section 2052-060. And because the setbacks were part of the original, the findings for the original approval, the application has been elevated to a planning commission review authority. This project was previously analyzed under CEQA in the original MND, and then the amended MND. And again, the common theme here is that that is unaffected. Here's a breakdown of the request of the setback reductions, and this is all detailed in your staff report and in the attachments in the packet. Essentially, there are 20 lots that are going to implement a single, single-story home model. In order to do this, the footprints are a bit larger, and so seven lots will have a reduced rear setback, 13 lots will have a reduced garage setback, and also a smaller reduced rear setback. And then another additional request is for one lot, and that's Lot 47, that has a site constraint due to an existing PUE. So the blue and the yellow, those are all the single-story homes, home models that are proposed. And then the agenda is Lot 47 with the PUE. There are no unresolved issues. There is two public comments that have come in since publication. They are related to fencing and maintenance in between rear fencing. And then, so as I analyzed for you in the previous slides, the conditional use permit findings can be made. The zoning code standards are still in compliance but for the reduced setbacks, which are allowed to be requested, a reduction allowed to be requested from the planning commission. And so with that, staff recommends, and the PED department recommends that planning commission approve a modification of the previously approved conditional use permit for Stone Bridge subdivision to allow reduced setbacks on 21 parcels. Happy to answer any questions, and the applicant, I believe, is in attendance, and they have a presentation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have a presentation? And if you could make sure the microphone is right up your mouth.
Like this.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, Chair Weeks, planning commissioners, staff, and members of the public, good afternoon. My name is Jaclyn Chan. I work for D.R. Horton, and I'm the project manager for the Stone Bridge Residential Development. First, I would like to thank Mike for a very thorough presentation, and thank you, Susie and Mike. They're great to work with and throughout this application. So I'll just wait a second for my presentation to come up. That's it, yes. So as mentioned, this revision for a setback reduction will allow for the addition of single-story home plan to our development. The original entitlement only contemplated two-story homes, and that's why the lot sizes, especially its depth, is suited for more of the footprint of a two-story home. We think that the addition of a single-story plan would add variety and just would make for a more varied and interesting streetscape. It also provides a smaller square footage plan that would cater to, more suitable for entry-level buyers as well as home buyers who wish to age in place. So in order to achieve that, we're requesting minor setback reductions for the garage and the rear yard as shown on this exhibit. So there is reduced by four on some of the lots, and reduced by one on the rear setback, and three, apologize for the mislabeling, on the garage side. And that's also outlined in the table. That's on the staff report. On the right, you will see an example of the home plan that we are proposing to be plotted on these specific lots. And then for a second side, please. And in addition, we have one irregular-sized lot that we would like to request reduced setback to fit our smallest footprint plan, that smallest footprint two-story plan that will also be offered throughout the development. So with that, if the planning commission has any questions or the public has any questions for me, I'd love to address or answer those.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Sanders?
Hi, thank you for the presentation.
Yes.
So the reduced setback, that puts the structures closer together, is that correct? Closer to the fence line?
Yes, that would, for the rear, the reduced rear setbacks, yes.
And is there any sort of fire issue to be concerned with because the structures are so close together?
No.
Still access to, for fire equipment and all that kind of?
No, that wouldn't be, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Carter? Or staff, I'm sorry, the applicant or staff?
This is probably for staff. I think we said that the previously approved DAC conditions will still apply on this project. Specifically, there's a condition number 12 that limits to 65% lot coverage. Have we checked to make sure we're still in compliance with that? And that's planning condition number 12. And number 14 says that five duets are subject to design review. It looks like the plan changes the number of duets. Do we need to change either of those conditions?
Our development does not change the 10 duets.
Okay, I could not make that out of the plan.
Oh, no worries, yes.
I'll take your word for it.
So there will still be, so 10 in total, five pairs of duets that are the original entitlement of below-market rate units.
Thank you for that.
I'm going to address the lot coverage. They, they're required to meet lot coverage. I can't say that we did a thorough review it at this point, but we certainly will. That needs to be shown on each individual plot plan, I guess. Master, it'll be a master building permit plan, master plan, and it'll show that lot coverage. That sort of change can be handled at staff level.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Pardo?
Harder. Harder.
Oh, gosh.
I have a question for the applicant. I'm not sure if it was in the report, but are these going to be for rent, or what's the housing going to be for?
They'll be sold to individual homeowners.
Okay, so not for rent, just for sale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Some of them are deed restricted, are they not?
The, all of the, thank you. I was just going to step in and say the five duets or the 10 units will be deed restricted, yes, for moderate income. Buyers.
I'm sorry, I...
That's okay.
I was looking at, I guess, I don't know.
Sounds like them.
So with that, I'll go ahead and open the public comment period on this item. If you're in the chambers and wish to make comment, please make your way to the podium, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes. Seeing no one rise, I will go ahead and close the public comment on this and bring it back to the commission. Is there, if there's no other questions at this time, would somebody like to make a motion for the resolution? Commissioner Sanders?
I move a resolution of the planning commission of the city of Santa Rosa making findings and determinations and approving modification to the previously approved conditional use permit, allowing reductions to the setbacks on 21 parcels within the Stone Bridge subdivision for the property located at 2220 Fulton Road, file number CUP 24-005, and will await reading.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioners, that was Commissioner Carter, seconded, and Commissioner Sanders made the motion, so we'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Sanders for comments.
Can I interject just for a sec? I'm getting a clarification that we need to correct in the resolution, a site to, where we've cited code section 2052-060, where it should be changed to 2054-060. And I'm not quite sure, I'm waiting for the response here of where that is, but it's in the resolution. I think we could, I can probably do a word search real quick.
This is Ashley Crocker, Assistant City Attorney. Thank you for flagging that. Susie, it's on page three of four, right under letter F, it's under "Be it further resolved that pursuant to zoning code section 2052.060." That should just be 2054.060. So if we could just make that clarification before the final vote. Thank you.
So then if we could have Commissioner Sanders amend his motion to reflect the changes as stated by City Attorney Crocker. Is that correct, Ashley?
That would be great, yes, thank you. If you can just clarify that and then get a second. It's a small change, but I appreciate you guys flagging it.
So it needs to be changed?
If you can just clarify that you make your motion just as amended to make that one change to the code section on page three of the resolution as noted. And then the second, and then the vote.
So if it's, is it under the first "be it further resolved"?
It's page three, right under letter F, the first "be it further resolved."
Okay.
That pursuant to zoning code section, that would be 20-54.060.
Okay, so instead of 20-52.060, it should be 20-54.060. Do you see that?
Correct.
So I'm not sure of the language, but I'd like to amend my resolution to reflect that the zoning code section should be 20-54.060.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Carter?
And I'll second.
Thank you. Does that work?
Perfect, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, Commissioner Sanders, comments?
Yeah, single story. We need that for any number of reasons. I have stairs in my house that are wearing me out right now. And so to have some single-story homes for people who are, you know, have issues with mobility, I like the term aging in place, it's great. So I can make all the required findings, and I will support the modification.
Thank you. Commissioner Carter?
Yeah, I have no problems with this. I think it's pretty straightforward, and I can make all of the necessary findings, and will be supporting the resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Pardo?
I can make all the required findings, and I'm in support of this project. It's the only way to lower housing cost.
Thank you. And I also can make all the required findings, and will be supporting this project. So with that, if we could have a vote, please?
Thank you, Chair Weeks. Chair, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Pardo?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanders?
Aye.
And Chair Weeks?
Aye. So that passes with four ayes. And please note that this action is final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk's office within 10 calendar days of today's decision pursuant to zoning code section 20-62.030. And is there anything else from either commission or staff for tonight, or this afternoon? It's still kind of afternoon. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.